This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, July the 15th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I'd just like to say to the council that I am glad to see you again after some time off of vacation, and I missed the privilege of singing my annual "God Bless America." Mr. Lasky gave me $10 to never bring my guitar back. Another time. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for a wonderful summer day, and thank you for freedom. We thank you for the freedom to live in America, to be a part of Mobile, Alabama. Today, we pray for our city. First of all, we pray that you breathe upon its people, and you'd remind us, Lord, of our need for you, and that our need for you is immensely great. And then we pray for our leaders, Lord, who stand here at the gates of our city today, and we celebrate their giftedness. And we pray that you would use them to continue, Lord, to give guidance and steer our great community in ways that honor you and build people. Would you favor these deliberations today? May what we do and say be honorable to you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our July 15, 2025, meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please, at this time, put it on the off or the vibrate position. The off or the vibrate position. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign and indicate in the resolution the ordinance of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When the speaker comes up, he or she must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertain to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who has recognized any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of July 8.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moved in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson's office.
We have a couple proclamations. I'll start off with Joe Snow.
Good morning. It gives me great pleasure today to introduce a number of young people here and their escorts, our Ishihara students ambassadors that were going to be going over to Japan here shortly. And we have a fine group of young men and women that will represent our city well, and this has been a tradition going on for the past 36 years. And we're so happy to have them here today, and I'll just read their names off real quickly. Students from Mobile traveling to Ishihara are Amanda Thomas, Claire Davidson, Connor Buckley, Cooper Jones, Daniel Bianno, Davis Edgeworth, Finley Gartman, Linda Saseyer, Sarah Frances Warren, and Tori Andrews. I wish you guys safe travels, and I know you'll do us proud.
And when you all get over there, please express our sincere hello to each and every one of the government officials over there.
That'll conclude the communications from the mayor.
Okay. Is Dr. Carolyn McCaskill, has she arrived yet? She has not. Okay, she's on the way. We'll come back to it. Okay, all right. Madam Clerk? That's fine. We'll come back to it.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moved in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on November 22 on Hayfield Place.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly moved in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 720 Museum Drive from R1 to B2.
And this open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If someone would come down, I'll state in your name.
Good morning. Jennifer Tremaine, 4564 Old Shell Road, Mobile. I'm here today representing the Volunteer Board of Directors for the Village of Spring Hill, which is a 501(c)(3) neighborhood improvement organization. Our board has coordinated with Burton Property Group on a redevelopment plan for this property on North McGregor Avenue for two years. We're excited to be at this point and in full support of this zoning change request, finding it appropriate and well-considered in light of the site location and positive impacts this use will bring. In fact, the developer has taken extra steps to respect the character and scale of the neighborhood and seeking approval of the use waiver and B2 zoning rather than directly seeking a B3 zoning, which would allow for more intensive use. Visit Mobile agrees there is demand for a hotel on this property that this project will meet. The urban planners who drafted the blueprint for Spring Hill suggested 20 years ago that this was the perfect location for a boutique hotel as an amenity because of the close proximity to I-65, University of South Alabama, Spring Hill College, and Langen Park. City staff agrees that the zoning change is in the community's best interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Village Master Plan, which is codified as an overlay district within the UDC, specifically supports a boutique hotel on this property in Chapter 4. City staff agrees that the zoning change takes into consideration the surrounding developments and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. All properties surrounding the development are commercial or civic, zoned either B2 or B3. There is no contiguous residential property and thus no adverse effects, only beneficial. As part of its collaboration with the neighborhood, Philip has included an additional $350,000 in his bid to implement streetscape improvements that meet the standards of the Village of Spring Hill Overlay District and ensure both safety and aesthetics at all entrances. Philip Burton is known for community-minded strategic investments and quality development throughout Mobile, and we're confident the project will not only be a success, be a catalyst for other developers, and inspire confidence in the subdistrict. We respectfully ask that council vote in favor of this request.
Is anyone else would like to speak to the council on this particular said item?
Morning. Philip Burton with Burton Property Group, speaking on behalf of the developer. So I'd first like to start by stating that the default zoning that we are rezoning from is a default zoning and is procedural and not intentional. So the current R1 zoning is a default zoning that is applied solely because the property is being sold by the city. The R1 designation does not reflect the surrounding land uses, nor does it support the Village of Spring Hill Master Plan. Our ultimate goal is to design a master plan project that is anchored by a boutique limited service hotel with supporting retail around it. However, no planning for this project can occur without the correct zoning in place that allows for the project to move forward. The proposed zoning is consistent with surrounding zoning and land uses, and the site sits directly adjacent to B2 use and other commercial activity. So simply rezoning to B2 brings the property into alignment with its surrounding context, creating local logical zoning continuity. So while a hotel typically requires a B3 zoning, we have chosen to pursue a B2 with a use variance for hospitality. This was a more conservative, less intensive zoning designation than a B3 because it demonstrates our commitment to be compatible and minimizing impact to the neighborhood. So our goal is to match the existing land use and not push the boundary with a B3 and a more aggressive zoning. We've hosted two community meetings, and so we believe our approach has been, you know, copasthetic with the neighborhood, and what we're proposing, we think, is to fill a specific need that's lacking in that particular part of the town. We're committed to enhancing the neighborhood, not disrupting it, and our work product in the immediate area reflects this. We redeveloped the shopping center of Spring Hill Village just down the street, which I might add was also B2. We developed or redeveloped Spring Hill Oaks condominiums on Old Shell Road, and we also restored and redeveloped the historical Chinaverry Home that is also on Old Shell Road, all within a mile from this particular site. So I live in the community and invested in its success and look forward to transforming this idle site into an attractive addition to the neighborhood. So thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Roosevelt Edwards, 3769 Shipes Lane in that Mobile, Alabama 36608. So I'm against this particular development. I live right across the street from it, and of course, they've identified that they're going to throw in additional money for infrastructure costs, the landscape around it or something. I'm not really sure what that really means. I wanted to talk to you that this infrastructure that they're talking about developing, I guess it's two years that I would entertain additional noise, noise volume, construction, whatever, because I live directly across the street from it. So once that's completed, there's also additional costs. To me, the landowner, property owner, that additional cost goes with noise, and property value may go up for this particular development. I look at it going down because anyone that comes into the neighborhood would say, hey, I have increased, I hear a lot of noise down here, and of course, what are all the cars? Where is this all, all this traffic volume? Where is it going? Why is it here? Because we have a nice boutique hotel where now you can look at getting to the tennis court in the South Alabama easierly. But that additional cost for the people that live there in that surrounding area adds to the problem. And of course, they said, hey, we've just finished the Spring Hill Shopping Center. Well, I'll tell you that on the front side of Spring Hill Shopping Center, it looks really good. On the backside of it, the power lines are there inasmuch as that the dumpsters that come along, that adds noise at about 4:30 in the morning, they have to drag it out because the power lines go from the power poles to the building. So it just wasn't thought through. These things that are not thought through adds cost to us in the neighborhood by increased noise. I hope that you guys can, as you deliberate this, do not consider this particular production. Thank you.
Questions, President?
Yeah, one second, sir. You had Mr. Carroll.
It was mentioned that there were two community meetings to discuss the project. Did you attend either one?
Yes.
You did?
I did.
And attended the meeting, you found the project to be?
Lacking.
Lacking?
Yes.
Can you tell me how many of the other neighbors off of Shipes in Sandtown attended?
Let's see. At least five off of the Sandtown area. I mean, out of the Sandtown community group, but there were more from the, from Stein Street, the Cedars. So there were a large group, more than 30 people at that, at the first meeting that I attended.
And the majority were receptive?
Majority were still concerned. They were concerned about the same things in which we're approaching in conversation today, attic noise. I would say that a lot of people, when they look and see something changing, they always have concerns about what those changes are going to represent and how they're going to face them going forward in the future. So most people are concerned about these changes.
I don't represent that district, but I wonder if the councilman from that district or person from that district had received any concerns?
I attended both of the pre-development meetings. One was a different proposal than this one is. So the most recent one for the boutique hotel, there was a good turnout for that. There were some concerns, a lot of questions asked about exactly what it was, was going to be put there. And as you all know, in a pre-development meeting like that, pre-zoning, pre-everything, you cannot be that specific. You have concepts. So there were just some questions about what the hotel would be. There were questions about parking. Trying to think what else. Just, you know, kind of the general things that we hear at most of these meetings. Traffic, of course, always comes up. So those were the primary, I think, questions that I heard.
There was talk, there was talk more to the streetscape also. Those concerns were?
The streetscapes are part of what the developer has agreed to do that will finish off the work that has been started on North McGregor with the lights, the curbs, the gutters, sidewalks, that kind of thing.
Question. Was the final design presented to the community itself?
I'm going to let Mr. Burton. He had some conceptual designs because, again, he can't be that specific until he gets the rezoning on this and moves forward to the next steps.
So we still haven't reached the point of final design, is what you're telling me?
That's right. We're still in concepts.
So?
That's the way it generally is with these, when they are doing rezonings. They cannot give you the exact until they are able to go forward with the next steps. He gave a concept for a boutique hotel. That is the intent going forward. So he is now trying to take the next steps in order to get things that are more exact so that you can see exactly what it is that they're planning to do. That's kind of the beauty and the downfall of what we are requiring now with the UDC.
So in essence, the final design, you guys will still be able to speak with the developer as the process goes forward, and the developer will be able to work with you to minimize any infractions or anything that you may see that may be adverse to the community. So there's no final design yet, and you still have the opportunity to have input. It's what I'm trying to get to the point of you realizing, this is just another step in getting to another phase in the design process. So you will still have opportunity, and so will members of the community, to actually affect the design of the project itself.
Another question, too, and I understand that you said that you all are experiencing noise now from the other dumpsters and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Have you contacted those businesses and asked them if they can, ask their company that they hire, if they can come at a later time than versus 4:30 in the morning? Because that will also, can help also to keep you from waking up at 4:30. Have you all tried to do that yet?
Okay, so there is an ordinance that people complain.
Have you contacted the company?
I have not, personally.
Okay, I ask you to go ahead and do that, because most businesses, especially they are neighborhood businesses, they'll try to work with the neighborhood and everything. But I ask you to go ahead and contact those companies.
I do have a little, I don't know if you all remember when Reggie Copeland was on the council and he was upset?
We wasn't all here.
Okay, well, at any rate, I know. Okay, okay.
I was here, Gina.
Yeah, well, you remember, we passed something that we kind of referred to as the Reggie Copeland Dumpster Ordinance, so that we were not allowing businesses that backed up to neighborhoods to empty their dumpsters until like a certain time in the mornings. And then we also had to go with padded bottoms so that, you know, when they put them back down, it didn't make as much noise. So that may be something that needs to be looked at for the companies that are emptying these dumpsters, to make sure that they understand what time you can actually start doing that sort of thing. So that's the first, I think, we've heard that that's an issue there. So that's definitely something we can look at and see if we can't get the company doing that to change the time.
Well, quick resolution, just contact the manager of that particular business and everything.
Oh, well, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 607 Bellsaw Avenue, 510 Chin Street, and 7099 Oshell Road. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This open up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Samuel Jackson Winston, and I stay at 1054 Congress Street. And I've been calling by the lot on 250 North Pine for a year now.
Ma'am, I'm calling for you. Are you talking about any of these public hearings items before us, which is on Bellsaw Avenue, Chin Street, or Oshell Road?
Oh, I didn't understand. I didn't hear you.
Yes, ma'am. Just a public hearing for these particular said streets here. 607, 500 Chin Street, and 7099 Oshell Road. This is the public hearing. Is anyone that is present that would like to address the council on these three properties? If not, these particular public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Ms. Darlene Shavers.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you this morning. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory, for having me as your guest. I am Darlene Shavers, and I am the Miss Senior Mobile 2025 delegate to the Miss Senior Alabama Pageant. As a delegate, I'm available to speak at any function or anything to help promote Mobile. Miss Senior Alabama is a nonprofit organization with a mission to help encourage older women from 60 to 79 to participate not only in their communities but statewide, and to help them know that at our age, we can still be active and enjoy life and be a meaningful part of our community. As the Mobile delegate, I would like to ask for your support to help promote Miss Senior Alabama in Mobile. We used to have a preliminary here up until 2004, I believe. After that, we're not sure exactly what happened, but the city council and the Mobile Area Water Sewer System all helped promote it and fund it. We need to do this again because I think I'm the first delegate in 25 years, maybe? If I've got, if I heard that right, I'm not really sure. So we'd like to ask your support in any way that you can offer it, financial or any way just to help promote Miss Senior Alabama. We've been in existence for over 38 years, and we have, this year, we had our pageant in Daphne, and it was, this is my first year to do it, and it was a wonderful experience. The women are wonderful. It provides like a statewide sisterhood. The sad thing about it is with all the counties and cities and all that we have in Alabama, we only had 17 delegates. 11 Miss Senior Alabama, which is 60 to 69, and seven or six that were Miss Super Senior, which is 70 to 79. Our Miss Senior Alabama is from Daphne, so that's close enough to home. But we would like to encourage you to support us and help us get the word out about Miss Senior Alabama because it is a worthwhile experience. Like I said, this is my first year, and I am having a blast. Throughout the state, in the past 12 months, we've had over 2,000 events that a Miss Senior Alabama delegate, whether it be from county, city, state, or whatever, has been at an event, and we just, we think that's wonderful. It's broken a record for this year. And the last note I'd like to make is the two oldest living Miss Senior Alabama live right here in Mobile at Summerby's. They are Miss Zuma Bjork and Miss Dorothy Holt. And if they could have been here today, I'm sure they would be saying the same thing, but they are beautiful and wonderful women, and we just like your support on this issue.
Ms. Gregory.
Quick question. Where is the state pageant, and when is it?
The state pageant, this year was held in Daphne.
Oh, so the state pageant was in that?
The state pageant, and it was the first weekend in June.
Okay, because you are Miss Senior Alabama.
No, I'm Miss Senior Mobile.
Right. And so the state pageant is going to be held in Daphne, or you did it?
It was held in Daphne.
Oh, okay.
And it will be in June of next year.
In June of next year.
The 2026 pageant, yes, ma'am.
Well, great. Well, thank you so much. And if you've got any other information on a PDF or anything, you can send it to our office, and we'll be happy to help promote it.
I gave y'all some handouts.
If we can get it in a PDF form that we can email out in our newsletters and things like that, we'll be happy to do that for you. But congratulations, and thank you for bringing this, you know, to us and providing the information. And I think that's wonderful that you all do this, and I can imagine the great camaraderie that you all have.
Thank you.
When you get together.
Congratulations, and you're a beautiful queen.
Thank you.
And do we, is Dr. Carolyn McCaskill, is she present? Okay. We have a special individual in the house on this morning. This person that's been honored is Dr. Carolyn McCaskill. She is deaf. However, she has accomplished a lot over the years. Mrs., excuse me, Dr. McCaskill, she has been attended with her son Jamal McCaskill, and also individuals from the deaf community is in attendance this morning. Let's get on the hand clap, as Dr. McCaskill come down. Whereas Dr. Carolyn McCaskill was raised in the Tomerville in the Roger Williams Housing Project by her mother, Miss Janet McCaskill. During the heights of segregation, she raised her deaf child in a world without interpreters, telephones, nor any legal protection. Their story is one of the courage, survivor, and transformation. And whereas despite the barrier they faced, Dr. McCaskill became the first Black woman to win a beauty pageant at the Garland University, the world's only liberal arts university for deaf students. She is co-founder and director of the Center for Black Deaf Studies, the first and only one of its kind in the world. And she is a national respected scholar, author, and educator, whose work has transformed deaf African Americans. And whereas she is a national leader in a black deaf education, civil rights, and culture preservation. And now therefore, we And now therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, along with Mayor William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of Mobile, Alabama, do hereby honor and recognize Dr. Carolyn McCaskill, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, on the 15th day of July, 2025. Sign by the mayor and all seven council members. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. I love you all.
Can I say a few words?
Thank you, thank you, thank you for this honor. I want to thank God. He made it possible for me to be here today to receive this recognition. I would like to thank my mother. She listened to me while I was a little girl. And I told her about the deaf school in Talladega, Alabama. And she supported me and my sister, and we went to the school. It, it changed my world. I accepted my identity. I was proud of my identity, being a deaf woman and growing up in Mobile, Alabama. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cry. Please excuse me. It's just an emotional day for me. You all have no idea how much I appreciate your support. I graduated from high school, and I went to Gallaudet University, and I became a professor. And I just retired a year ago, but I don't know the meaning of the word retire. And I continue to work because I have so much to give you all. You all, you helped me. You all supported me. And I was able to give back to the community. And that's most important, the culture that I value and what I've learned here growing up in Mobile, Alabama. And the foundation, the Center for the Deaf, for Deaf Studies. And it shows that we are proud, rich culture, and valued. And we deserve for our history to be known to the world. I started working on my memoir to share with my son, Jamal, and I want them to know about his history. He share, so he can share with the world as well and make this happen. I can't find the words again to thank you all. It means so much. Thank you.
Motherfucker. We're going to ask her, her mother, would you please stand and wave your hand, you know? Okay, all right.
I have one more thing. I have my classmates here with me. Yes, her classmates from Talladega. Thank you.
Congratulations. If you all hang around, um, the council would like to take a picture at the council meeting with all the classmates and everything outside the atrium. If you can probably give us like 15 to 20 minutes to finish this meeting, okay?
Do you need to stay down here?
No, no, we'll take outside.
Ordinance is held over 63036. Ordinance to amend section 63028 of the Code of the City of Mobile.
So moved. Second. Proportional move in second. Any discussion?
Sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I have a very small amendment to offer here regarding section 6317, item number three, where it just simply should state that at least one person must be present at the business from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, excluding state or federal holidays. This amendment's on file with the clerk's office.
Another discussion?
We need to vote on the amendment.
Second.
Second. Okay, so, okay, proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor on amendment?
Aye.
And all opposed? Amendment passed. Going back to discussion. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Resolution's held over 008925. Approved purchase order to emergency equipment professional for repairs to aerial fire truck. 08928, approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment Company for blocking hoods. 08929, approved purchase order to RBC Vegetation Management for right-of-way tree maintenance and removal on Oshel Road. 08931, approved purchase order to Striker Sales Corporation for preventative maintenance service for chest compression devices. 09932, reallocate funds from capital improvement fund project equipment tennis to Capital Project Copeland Cox Tennis Center for tennis court repairs and resurfacing. 13933, authorized change order one with Wiregrass Construction Company for U.S. Highway 45 street scape improvements. 23934, authorized easement agreement with Robertson Construction and Colony Woods Town Home Owners Association. 37935, considered application of any abrasion for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a sedan service.
So moved.
Second.
A proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced, 64037.
Per council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 03937 through 6951.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
03937 and 938 are appointing Alvin Garvin to the Advisory Commission on the Disabled and reappointing Bruce Helbig to the Golf Course Advisory Committee. 27939 designate Dolphin Way Baptist Church as the new voting place in Ward 5-5 for the 2025 municipal election. 37940 and 941 recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premise only license to speed stop on Government Boulevard and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Pedro's Tacos and Tequila Bar on Airport Boulevard. 40942, 943, and 944 are declaring the structures at 607 Bellsaw Avenue, 510th Street, 7099 Oshel Road, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58945, declare we's noxious weed lean group 1666. 60946 and 947 are approving award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month and the officer of the month. 60948, 949, 950, and 951 are determining appropriations to Dodge Elementary School, Marching Cougars Band, Bam Booster Club, and the University of South Alabama Jack Girls serve a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 08952 to 08953.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of both of these resolutions as read.
Second. Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
08952, approved purchase order to Trans-Tex Transportation Products of Texas for traffic speed cushions. District 6, 08953, approved purchase order to Trans-Tex Transportation Products of Texas for traffic speed cushions for District 7.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Resolutions being introduced, 08954 through 6968.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, 08957, 958, 960, and 961.
Second. Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
08957, approved purchase order to Schaefer Plastics North America for garbage carts for garbage collection. 08958, approved purchase order to Cyrus Ford for pickup trucks. 08960, approved purchase order to University of South Alabama for first semester paramedic courses. And 08961, approved purchase order to University of South Alabama for second semester paramedic courses.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Call for public hearings. 41969, call for public hearing to consider the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 685 Schillingdale Road South, scheduled August 19th. 41970, call for public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 4154 and 4164 Moffett Road from B2 to I1, scheduled August 19th. 41971, call for public hearing to consider the application of Catan Amet for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service scheduled July 29th.
So moved. Second. Proportional move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District 5, Councilman Davis. District 2, Councilman Carroll.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. As discussed in pre-council today, there has been some concern from residents uh, in District 2 along the, down the Bay Area with, uh, what was happening along I-10 on the westbound side. Uh, what you guys are seeing is a series of test pilings or test holes for pilings that will be, uh, used for the Mobile River Bridge. However, that is not the location of the piling or structure that you see. Uh, the location will be on the other side of I-10, uh, on the eastbound side, uh, closer to where the, uh, jailhouse is. And at that point, the bridge itself would probably rise about 100 feet. Uh, there's been questions about the letters sent out by Aldot to the neighbors. Uh, those letters are for right-of-entry permitting so that Aldot can document the property to make sure that if anything happens to the property while the bridge is under construction, that doubt that any damages would be replaced by Aldot in the state. So they're asking for permission to enter the property to document its current condition to make sure if anything happens during any type of constructions, all things will be corrected. Furthermore, there's no condemnation of any property or taking any property. I've been told that all property needed for the bridge has been acquired, and there's no other property acquisitions going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Carroll. I'm glad for the clarification. I did receive some phone calls from the area last night, too. Uh, District 6, Councilman Woods.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I just want to say, briefly take a moment and say thank you to, uh, Carl and his team at the Regional Senior Center, District 6. Uh, had the opportunity this morning. I was running a little behind for pre-council because I'd stopped by to drop off some goodies for the paint and sip, sip and paint, either one of those, same thing. Um, and, uh, they had a, had a great setup, and the senior center was just full this morning. I'm there taking a, a trip to to Africa Town today as well. So I just wanted to say, take a moment to say thank you to Carl and his team at the, at the senior center. Um, uh, I heard nothing but great things over the past month or two, um, you know, interacting directly with folks, uh, on a day-to-day basis. And, um, they have high things to say about the seniors. So thank you for the programming that they put in place out there in, um, the seniors of District 6 and really the, 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 the region. Um, really greatly appreciated. So I just want to take a moment to say thank you. That's it for me.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Woods. District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the city council approved about $150,000 for some tree trimming on Azelia Road. There's been an intersection at Burma Road and Azelia Road that has been a troubled intersection for a long time. I think we all arrived at the conclusion that, uh, trees, uh, sort of being in the way, blocking, um, the light uh, or causing some confusion there has, you know, been an issue, and the city has now, uh, got a contract approved by the city council to proceed with some of that tree trimming. So thank you for getting that done. The second thing is, um, I want to give some thanks to Commissioner Ludgood, uh, County Commissioner, District 1, for her continued support of resurfacing roads and projects through the Pay-as-you-go program for the City of Mobile, particularly in District 4. She allocated a substantial amount of money, or the taxpayers voted on a substantial amount of money to resurface the entire Morningside neighborhood. Uh, unfortunately, that neighborhood after the next election will not be a part of District 4. It'll be a part of District 3. Uh, and I always mess with, uh, the, the soon-to-be-new, uh, council district representative, Mr. President CJ Small, that we're turning over a neighborhood, uh, better than what we found it. So, um, he should be good to go for a little while as far as resurfacing is concerned. Uh, the second, the third thing I want to address is potholes throughout the city. We're, we're, we know that there are potholes everywhere throughout the city. And the city has told us that they are actively trying to play catch-up. There was some equipment trouble that was had, and now they're repaired that equipment, and they're going to be out playing catch-up for the next two to three weeks because we have gotten, um, a lot of them reported. But just to the residents of the city that have not reported a pothole, if there is a pothole that you need to get addressed or that you know of, please report that through the 311 system, and it will be logged, and then it will be caught at some point. Prior to these pieces of equipment going down, the city has done a pretty good job of filling potholes, which generally about 48 hours, they can get them filled. Uh, they've just sort of been stymied with this equipment problem that has since been addressed. They took delivery on a brand-new, uh, asphalt truck. Uh, but potholes are just a temporary fix. We have two additional contracts that we utilize to, uh, address problems with roadways. We have a large patch contract that's underway. I think it's funded at about 750,000. It could probably be funded at a higher rate, so that's something we need to look forward to doing in our next, next budget cycle. I think it's been a successful program. And then the third, which is the surefire solution, is to resurface roads entirely. And we use both pay-as-you-go funds as we see through Commissioner Ludgood's allocation, Commissioner Doitt, and Commissioner Hudson's allocations. But then we also fund our uh, citywide resurfacing project. And I'm happy to report that District 4, we've allocated more than ever before, uh, through our allocation. We have approximately 3.6 or so million planned for 2026. It just takes a little time to get to that point where you have the contractors, the contracts, the surveys, all of that stuff done. Uh, but those resurfacing projects will be coming down the pipe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District 1, Councilman Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. And of course, on the agenda today, we saw 13933 authorized change order. Um, of course, we're excited to see what's taking place on Highway 45, our street scape improvement. Um, you're seeing continual work being done. Um, it's a process because so much is taking place from sidewalks, um, to, uh, we also had the opportunity to fix some drainage um, along Highway 45. So it's a great opportunity. A lot of people thought this would never happen, but we was able to get it done, um, this term. So thank you to the administration. Um, and thank you to everyone that made this happen, to the engineers. Thank you, Nick, and everybody on your team. Um, also, this past weekend, we had a great events take place in Mobile and the surrounding areas. Uh, we had a lot of music downtown. The Mob Town Festival, uh, was great. I had the opportunity to attend the event. Um, a couple of the events, you had, um, gospel music to hip-hop music. Um, so all types of music for everyone to come out and have fun. Um, and then I also want to give a big shout out to, um, Alabama-owned Ryan Williams. I had the opportunity to meet with him as well. He had a camp for the kids. Um, and so it was a great time to see so many young people, excited to see, um, this young man doing so many great things. Uh, we have some great things taking place as well coming up this weekend. Um, I want to give a big shout out to Rob Lasky and his team, um, Mobile Public Safety, the city's, um, Sin Advisory Board, Bay Area Women, um, and myself. Uh, we have Dr. Brown will be here July the 18th, um, at 5:30 at the Dodge Community Center. Um, and he is a motivational speaker, conflict resolution expert, and he will be here in the community. expert, and he will be here in the community, um, and just sharing his perspective with parents, uh, with educators and leaders, um, how to have, uh, productive discussions about gun violence in our community. Um, so you can come out and learn. If you're an educator, if you're a teacher, um, if you, anyone in the community that want to learn more about, come out, you can bring your kids and youth, but come out and learn. Um, and then plus, we're gonna have some food there. Uh, so, um, from Cozy Brown, so come out, some light refreshments as well. And then on July the nineteenth, if you would like to be a part of the adult field day at Sage Park, July the nineteenth from six to eight PM, come out. I'm gonna participate. We're gonna play some games. Um, and I think I'm gonna win. I'm a winner. So, uh, come out and let's have some fun. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sure LaFlore taught you that. Thank you, Councilman Penn. District seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tomorrow evening at the Mobile Museum of Art, we will be holding our District seven community meeting. This one will be a back-to-school meeting where we are asking all of the residents who attend to bring back-to-school supplies. And the principals from the four elementary schools, the four public elementary schools in the district will be there. They will be able to collect the supplies at that point and take them back to the, their schools and, uh, distribute to classrooms where they are needed. We'll also, of course, have some speakers from the administration to provide updates citywide and in the district. It starts at six o'clock and that is tomorrow night at the Mobile Museum of Art. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory. And greetings to the citizens of District three on next Tuesday, uh, June, excuse me, July, I keep on saying June, July twenty-second, uh, at B.C. Rain High School, uh, food champs on Dopin' On Apartway and also Revitalize D.I.P. Uh, they will, um, be holding a meet the candidate, marry all forum. Again, the doors will open up at five forty-five and inviting all the citizens of District three to please come out on next Tuesday, July the twenty-second, at B.C. Rain High School. Again, the event will start at six o'clock PM and the doors will open up at five forty-five. Again, inviting all the citizens of District three to please come out on next Tuesday. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Proped to move in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.